Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call to order our meeting for October 20th, 2020. This is the Lee County Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting. Let's begin this morning by asking Pastor Randy Moody from Buckingham Presbyterian Church to come forward and say our invocation. Good morning, Pastor.
Good morning. Let us pray. Almighty God, you created this world and declared it good. Much of its goodness comes from its diversity. Help us all to embrace the diversity of your creation, not only in nature, but in human beings. Help us to let our discourse be civil with one another and help us all to speak with one another, remembering that speaking and conversation requires listening to one another so that we can seek the common good for your creation. And we pray that you will empower this body today and direct their deliberations so that they can find what is in the best interest of this community, the people who reside in it. And may we, as a nation, return to civil discourse so that we can see compromise as a step toward progress and so that we can do what is in the best interest of your creation. Bless us and may we serve you and honor you in all we do. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. And at this time, I'd like to recognize Commissioner Pendiggrass for a ceremonial that we have not seen in a long time. Commissioner Pendiggrass?
Thank you, Chairman. We have missed him. We could have Sandra and Karen come forward. We have a special guest this morning, Maui. He is adorable. He's a very strong little pit terrier mix, and he's actually been, had, a good, done a good deed. He's actually saved another dog's life before. We hear some updates on Maui and what's been going the last few months. We've missed seeing you the last six months, so thank you for being back.
Good morning, Commissioner. Thank you so much for having us here this morning. I'm Sandra Tapfumane. I'm the Director for Lee County Domestic Animal Services, and it's been a while since we've seen you. We're happy to be back. We have brought Maui this morning, and it's not often that you get to adopt a hero, but Maui saved a dog's life last week. So his friend, Jack, who is a fellow resident, he was severely anemic because he had Cookworm, and our veterinary staff used the blood from Maui in order to save Jack. So he is a hero, and he is up for adoption currently, looking for a home.
Good. And I know, even though a lot of things changed over the last six months here in county business, but I know your agency's been working really hard. Have you had more adoptions in the last six months, since people have changed their living habits and been at home more?
Yeah, we have seen quite a number of adoptions. We've seen people coming in. A lot of fostering has taken place over the last six, seven months. People who are home, you know, their kids are home, so we're always looking for new fosters, always looking for people to adopt. So it's been nice to see people coming in despite the pandemic going on. We're still able to serve them and allow these animals to get into homes.
Well, thank you. And so if you're watching from home, this little three-year-old hero we have here, he's three years old. He makes, he'd be great, he's great with other dogs, and he loves hanging out with the girl dogs I herd at the kennel, so, and so he'd be a great pet for somebody.
He is. And we do have a promotion right now. We have $10 for all of our cats, and then starting next month, we have the Fall in Love promotion. So all of our adult dogs are $25, adult cats are $25. And then it's also Adopt a Senior Pet Month next month, so we're also going to be having a special on them, $10 for senior pets.
Thank you. Thanks again for being here back.
Good luck, Maui.
Thank you. Good luck, Maui.
It's a, it's a strong dog. Believe me, I had him in office early. He's a strong dog.
Very good. Well, thank you, Commissioner Pendiggrass. All right, we have a couple more cards here. Okay, very good. At this time, we're going to go ahead and move on to our recap. This is the part of the agenda where we talk about, where we talk about any additions, deletions, or corrections that need to be made to the agenda. It appears that we have no items to be deferred or continued, no revisions or corrections, no items to be pulled for discussion, and no walk-ons and carryovers have been reported this morning. So there's no action that'll need to be taken on the recap. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Real quick, just some housekeeping for folks who may be here for their first time. There will be multiple times to speak and public comment throughout this meeting today. In the beginning, when we're talking about the consent agenda, the administrative agenda items and the public hearings, I will call for specific times to talk and public comment on each of those items as they come up. That is not the time to talk about things that are not on the agenda. We want to keep that conversation focused to the topic at hand. Later, in the meeting, we'll have what's called Public Presentation of Matters by Citizens. That's the time where we're going to take public comment on our workshop this afternoon, which deals with homeless issues. That's also the time where we'll take your comments on anything that was not on the agenda today, so just so that everybody knows when they'll have their turn to speak today. Commissioner Mann, do you have anything to pull from the consent agenda for discussion?
I would like to pull, please, number 25, just for a couple of comments.
Okay, number 25. Commissioner Manning, anything to pull?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Pendiggrass?
None.
And Commissioner Sandelli? And I have nothing to pull as well.
Move the balance.
All right, so we have a motion to approve all the items on the consent agenda except for number 25 from Commissioner Pendiggrass. The second is from Commissioner Manning. Does anybody wish to speak and public comment on those items on the consent agenda today? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Do we have any discussion, commissioners? Do we have any objections? No objections, that motion carries unanimously. Let's move to item 25. Mr., Mr. Pendiggrass, or I'm sorry, Mr. Mann, you're the one who wanted to pull the item. Go ahead and introduce it, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is one of my pet pieces, and I'd just like to take the opportunity to point it out each time one of these comes up again. This is for the purchase of some pair of transit vehicles in the neighborhood of, I think, three-quarters of a million dollars. It's federal grant money we're talking about, and that's free money. It doesn't cost us anything, so Frank, why are you griping? Because this free federal money, you know, right as we sit here and speak today, they're trying to decide whether we're going to increase the annual deficit of the United States of America by 1 trillion or possibly 3 trillion. So that's the free money we're talking about and passing on to our children and grandchildren. The thing that always catches my attention, there's fine print that says we're replacing these because they've reached 150,000 miles, and somewhere it is chiselled in stone that at 150,000 miles, we get to trade these things and get some more of that free money out of DC for it. You go out and look at my truck right now, it's got 174,000 miles on it. The two vehicles I owned before that had 2 and 1/4-plus thousand, 100,000 miles. We have one of the finest maintenance facilities in America. If you guys haven't seen it, go out and look at it, and you can eat off the floor. They do a superb job looking after our equipment. Just drives me nuts to replace equipment that is not worn out. So, end of sermon. I'm sorry, I appreciate the two minutes. I'll move the item.
Move approval?
Yes.
Okay, motion for approval from Commissioner Mann, and the second is from Commissioner Manning. Do we have any discussion, commissioners? Any questions? Okay, seeing none. Is anybody here to speak and public comment on item number 25 on our consent agenda? I'll close public comment. Any further discussion at this time, commissioners? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the question. Are there any objections?
With great pain, I support this.
Okay, so no objections, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Commissioner Mann. All right, let's move to our administrative agenda at this time. Administrative agenda item number one, Mr. DeJalay, before you, well, go ahead and introduce the item, and then I've got a question for our county attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, commissioners. Item number one on the administrative agenda is a motion to accept a land donation for Airport Hall Road right-of-way, and would like to have Mr. Salier present the item, please.
Okay.
Commissioners, as the county manager says, this item accepts additional land donations for South Airport Hall Road right-of-way. You can see on your map the depictions there of the donations and what the county already owns. The areas in red are right-of-way that the county currently owns. The green, yellow, and blue highlighted areas are what is being donated today, or offered today. The main piece there is the blue section. That's approximately 1.2 miles in length, and as you can see, it would give the county a three-mile corridor of right-of-way. The donors do need to amend the mixed-use plan development zoning and master concept plan, primarily to remove a spine road that had been contemplated that would go south from Alaco Road, but really, that's the extent of it, and it's about 92 acres in total. Mr. Scrotin-Bore is here, representing the donating entities, and staff is available for your questions.
Very good. Commissioners, do you have any questions for our staff? Okay, seeing none. I just wanted to ask a quick question to our county attorney, just to put it on the record. Last time we saw this issue, there was an extra component added to it that included a land donation to Florida Gulf Coast University. Because of my employment status there, I had actually abstained from that. It is my understanding that FGCU is no longer part of this item, and therefore, I no longer have a conflict. Mr. County Attorney, can you address that for me?
Certainly. Commissioners, the last time this matter was before you, it was bootstrapped to a transaction involving the Florida Gulf Coast University. That matter has now been separated out from what is before you for consideration today. Those details will be presented to you in a separate item for your November 10th board meeting. At that meeting, it will be incumbent upon yourself to declare conflict once again and abstain from that consideration, but since the matters have been bifurcated, you are fully empowered and authorized to sit here and vote on this matter this morning.
Okay, thanks, Mr. County Attorney. Appreciate that. All right, any further questions, commissioners? Commissioner Mann?
Just make me understand this. This is a, when you get a donation like this, there's usually two sides to this understanding. The donor, in this case, is being relieved from a previous obligation through a zoning action. Just put that on the record. What are, what are they no longer obligated to do after they donate this? It's part of this agreement, I understand.
Well, Commissioner Mann, that, that essentially is correct. As I said, the donors will need to amend their zoning and their master concept plan and get the spine road that had been contemplated to go south off Alaco Road removed so that that condition, that zoning condition would essentially be deemed as satisfied by the donation of this right-of-way.
And their savings, if I could put it that way, by not having to build that, is approximately...
A private, our DOT estimates that a private contractor could probably build that road with accompanying sidewalk for, in the neighborhood of a million and a half dollars.
Okay, so they're not obligated to do that any longer. Maybe there's some technical steps that have to be taken as well, but the county, in return, is receiving land value estimated at...
County lands puts the county's purchase price for these properties at around $2 million.
Okay, that's just, that's the big picture. I just wanted to understand. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any further questions before I move to public comment? Okay, at this time, we do have one speaker who wishes to speak in public comment. I'll call Kitty Green.
Good morning.
I have submitted a letter on behalf of the FGCU Foundation, and I'll read you just part of it this morning. This letter is to make you aware that the Florida Gulf Coast University Foundation has, has entered into a separate agreement with Alaco East Fund and Alaco West Fund, which, among other actions, provides easements which will give the foundation access to the future Airport Hall Road when built. Accordingly, the foundation has no objection to the land donation agreement, which will effectively extinguish what would have been our only access to Alaco Road. Okay?
Thank you very much. And I'll, I'll make sure I give a copy of the letter over to the clerk, too. Very good. Does anybody else wish to speak in public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment. Any further discussion, commissioners? All right, I'll call the question then. Are there any objections? No objections, that motion carries unanimously. All right, item number two, Mr. DeJalay, please introduce the item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number two is, we're asking you to approve behavioral health and medical services contracts. Would like Mr. Mora to present the item.
Thank you, county manager. Good morning, commissioners. Administrative agenda item number two comes from Human and Veteran Services. It seeks board approval of subrecipient contracts with both Salus Care and Children's Advocacy Center of Southwest Florida. Combined, the approval of these contracts will provide funding of up to $4,675,451 for substance abuse, mental health treatment services, and initial medical exams and consultations for children under the suspicion of abuse. Upon approval, an amount of not to exceed $4,425,451 will be awarded to Salus Care to satisfy the county's local match for providing mental health and substance abuse treatment services required by Florida statute and the Florida Administrative Code. The balance of the funding in the amount not to exceed $250,000 will be awarded to the Children's Advocacy Center of Southwest Florida to provide medical exams, consultations for abandoned, neglected, or children under the suspicion of abuse as required by Florida statute. These contracts are effective through September 30th, 2021. Funding for both these contracts has remained at the same level since the 2017-18 fiscal year. Funding for both these contracts was approved during the 2021 final budget hearing held on September 15th, 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Mora. All right, we will, we'll continue to go with item number two, but I've been made aware there's something I need to correct on item number one, so we'll go back to that in just a moment. Okay, so item number two, does anybody have any questions on the Salus Care and the behavioral health and medical services contracts, commissioners? Okay, seeing none, let's go ahead and take public comment. Is anybody here to speak and public comment on the Salus Care and Children's Advocacy Center items today? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public comment. Any further discussion on this item?
Move the item, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we have a motion for approval from Commissioner Manning and a second from Commissioner Mann. Do we have any further discussion on that?
Just to say amen. Now, there are thousands of people that are impacted positively by the work of these two organizations. This is a longstanding contract we have here, and I'm pleased to see it continued and hopefully will forever. These guys do a wonderful job.
And hopefully, in the future, we can actually increase it, because there are so many people waiting for services.
Amen.
That, that have to travel from out there.
Amen. Seeing no further comments, then, we'll go ahead and call the question. Are there any objections to the motion? No objections, then that motion carries unanimously. All right, now we'll go back to number one. Mr. County Attorney, you have something you would like to...
Mr. Chairman, just for the purposes of clarifying the record, because I believe I missed it, and perhaps the clerk did also, could we just have the board restate the motion to approve number one, get a second, and then take a vote?
Very good. So, the motion for approval is from Commissioner Manning, and the second is from Commissioner Pendiggrass. And then, are there any, is there any discussion on that? I apologize, that was what we missed on number one. Okay. Then we'll take the vote again. Are there any objections to the motion? Seeing none, it carries unanimously.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and apologize for that. All right, let's move to item number three, Mr. DeJalay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number three, asking you to approve a contract and, and update, update the county fee schedule with the Florida Department of Health. Would like Mr. Mora to present the item.
Good morning. Administrative agenda item number three also comes from the Human and Veteran Services Department. It seeks board approval of a contract with the Florida Department of Health in the total amount of $1,975,872 to provide public health services. In accordance with Florida statute, funds will be used for the operations of the Lee County Health Department in order to promote, protect, maintain, and improve the health and safety of citizens and visitors. Lee County ordinance also authorizes the county to charge and collect reasonable fees for county-funded health department services. The collected fees help to offset the taxes required to operate the health department. Just to note, there is no planned change in the fee schedule from last fiscal year. This contract is effective through September 30th of 2021. The total contract amount has remained the same since the 2014-15 fiscal year. Funding for this particular contract was approved during the 2021 final budget hearing held on September 15th, 2020.
Excellent. Any questions, commissioners? Commissioner Mann?
I'm sorry to take so much time this morning, but it's a learning process for me still. This is the Florida Department of Health contract with the Lee County Government, which supports the Lee County Health Department. So when people hear about the Lee County Health Department, they think that's us, but the people that work for the Lee County Health Department, they get their paycheck each month from...
State of Florida.
The state of Florida. That's been a little bit more confusing because of the Corona, I mean, the virus that we're dealing with and the pronouncements and announcements coming from the Department of Health, but they answer in the final analysis to the state of Florida. But they stay in our buildings. I think that's it.
Commissioners, Florida law requires all counties in the state to contribute to the operating, the operating budget for the departments of health, either by way of in-kind services or, or cash. In this case, it is the, it is cash, and the, we are predominantly paying for primary care, patient services, communicable disease services, and environmental health services. It's just required by statute.
Let me just add a quick PS so that no one questions where, why, where I'm coming from. I think these folks do a superb job. Ms. Smith, in particular, has been very receptive and responsive to all the crisis that she's dealing with and her good people over there, so this is a good partnership, but I'm kind of clearing the air here for the general public, because they don't understand when it says Lee County Health Department, that we're really dealing with a state agency. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioners, any further questions or comments on this? Commissioner Sandelli?
Only comment I have is, if you go back to the Salus Care piece and this piece here, you're talking in excess of $6 million, and I think it's a further commitment to the needs that are out there and the resources that we're applying to meet some of these needs, so, it'll say.
I agree, I agree. All right. Well, then, seeing no further questions by the board, does anybody wish to speak and public comment on the Health Department contract? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Commissioners, does somebody wish to make a motion at this time?
Moved.
Motion for approval from Commissioner Manning, and a second is from Commissioner Mann. Let me just say real quick, before we vote on this, that Mr. DeJalay, I appreciate you and your staff and the wonderful collaboration that you've had with the Health Department this year. We have stepped up in ways to work with them that, you know, I don't think we've ever seen before, and it's wholly appropriate, because we were facing, you know, a crisis like we hadn't seen since 1918. So, thank you for the cooperation that we've seen there, and I don't know if there's something you'd like to say as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We, I can't tell you how much we appreciate the, the relationship that we have with the, with the public health unit, and in particular, Angela Smith, who is the local administrator. I'm gonna tell you, she's a rock star.
Yeah.
She, you know, she, throughout the pandemic and all of the work that we've done together, you know, I've talked, we've had phone conversations at 7:00 in the morning, 10:00 at night, and so has the rest of our staff, and she has always made herself available and her staff available, and they, they do really, really good work.
Good deal, good deal. Well, all right, well, seeing no further discussion, then, I'll go ahead and call the question. Are there any objections to the motion? No objections, that motion carries unanimously. All right, Mr. DeJalay, please introduce item number four.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number four is asking you to award a contract for design of Iona Drainage District Canal H7 improvements, and ask Mr. Roland Adelini to present the item.
Morning, Roland.
Morning, commissioners. Today's request is to award a contract to Kimley Horn for the Canal H7 project. This graphic here depicts the area that was severely impacted by Hurricane Irma, as well as Invest 92 well. This was identified in our initial assessments, assessments in Phase II flood assessments quickly after the storm, and this area involves areas such as Florida, Florida Southwestern College, as, as well as Province Town. Those areas were severely impacted, so we're looking at upgrading the, the channel there as well, some culverts and a weir structure through FSW's campus, so we did receive nearly 76, no, I'm sorry, yeah, $76,000 from DEO for hazard mitigation grant, so, actually, I'm sorry, Department of Emergency Management, we got the grant from, for HMGP funds.
Excellent. Do we have any questions for Mr. Adelini or our staff? Okay, Commissioner Pendiggrass?
Roland, this will be a great project. A little bit to the west of this area, off of Cypress Lake Drive, Meyer Lee area, and the area of Placempia, is that gonna help reduce flooding and help the flows, get the water going west with these improvements?
No, this actual, this sub-basin moves to the west of this project, it goes into a south branch of Whiskey Creek. I believe the Meyer Lee area goes into another drainage area, Deep Lagoon area, so that has its own set of separate issues, but this was confirmed in the Phase II, as well as our Phase III analysis, looked at, at these improvements here as a priority.
So it will also help them, Whiskey Creek, with the canal, that's the canal that runs through the golf course now, with the weir?
No, this is just specifically this area, just to south of College Parkway, east to 41, and down to the IDD Canal.
Especially the canal Whiskey Creek, that's been an issue in the past, that runs off of Summerlin, comes always from Metro, I think, Ten Mile Canal.
Yes, we're looking at those areas as well. We submit a lot of applications to, for HMGP funding, and this was, this is one of the ones that are approved, but we are looking at several of those other canals that go to Whiskey Creek.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Adelini. At this time, I'll go ahead and call for public comment on item number four, the Iona Drainage District Canal Improvements. Did we see anybody? Okay, nope, no one's speaking in public comment on that, so we'll close public comment. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion for approval from Commissioner Manning, and a second is from Commissioner Pendiggrass. Any further discussion on this item? All right, are there any objections? No objections, that motion carries unanimously. And, Mr. DeJalay, item number five is similar?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number five, asking you to award a contract for design of US 41 Industrial Park Drainage Improvements. Roland?
Yes, in order to the last one, this is the award a contract to Kissinger Campo in the, an amount of 240, low over $246,000 for design and permitting for the IDD Canal, Ten Mile Canal Industrial Park region. If they pull up the graphic, I would show you the watershed area, but this area was heavily impacted by both of those storms, identified in the Phase II assessment, an area between Ten Mile Canal and US 41. If you recall, those folks from Gymnastics World and Habitat for Humanity, the Restore Facility, as well as RV Park, all those areas have been significantly prone to flooding in that area, and so this was identified in that early phase, is confirmed in the Phase III study. We also received an $87,000 grant from HMGP.
Very good, and I think this is, this is an incorrect map. This is what we just voted on.
Right, there should be, I'm not sure.
Could be a different map, but I think we understood your, your explanation. Do we have any questions for our staff at this time, commissioners? Okay, seeing none, let me go ahead and take public comment. Is anybody here to speak and public comment on the, the US 41 Industrial Park Drainage Improvements? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment on that. Does somebody wish to make a motion?
Moved.
Motion from Commissioner Manning, and the second is from Commissioner Pendiggrass. Any further discussion on that? Yeah, Commissioner Pendiggrass?
Roland, does our department have any way of notifying the businesses in that area that was affected through three years ago from the floods that these improvements are being done?
Well, I mean, we've had communications through our Phase II assessments, and they, we've communicated individually, but I don't think as a group, I don't believe we have gone out there. Now that we have a consultant on board, I think that would be the first, good, logical first step, is to work with that, that group, because it's kind of a, it's an association of industrial facilities in that area, so I think that would be a good first step, is to bring them in.
Yeah, I would love to see some type of communication from our communications department back out to the businesses that were affected from that three, four years ago, because, you know, it was very devastating in all those businesses, so that shows the county did do the studies, and we are assessing, and we are taking measures ahead to keep that from happening again, so, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
May I, please?
Thank you. We are currently sending out emails to anyone on our flood mailing list, so if any of those businesses are on that list, they are getting this information.
Okay, great.
Continuously being updated.
Excellent, thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right, so the motion on the floor is from Commissioner Manning and is, was seconded by Commissioner Pendergrass. Do we have any further discussion on this one? Okay, seeing no further discussion, are there any objections? No objections, that motion carries unanimously. Item number six, Mr. DiJellet.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Would like to have Randy Cerchi come to the podium, please. Commissioners, we're asking you to award a contract for sidewalk improvements on Hancock Bridge Parkway between Moody Road and US 41.
Good morning, Commissioners. Administrative agenda items six, seven, and eight are projects, sidewalk projects and shared use path projects that have worked their way through the BPAC process. I've been here a few years, and I've built all the easy sidewalks. The ones that are left are tough. They all do, they require design, a lot of drainage relocation, a lot of drainage improvements with them. This one's from US 41 to Moody Road on the north side. Number seven, I think, is from, on Hancock, from 16th to 24th, filling in the gaps there. Both of these have a bridge to cross. We have to widen the bridge a little bit to get utilities across. And then number eight, the last one's on Stringfellow Road, that's an eight-foot-wide asphalt path from York to St. James City there, and again, we have another bridge down there, so unfortunately, none of these are reasoned out, but they worked their way through the impact fee process, and this area in particular, it's a little easier. We work with the impact fees and we fund them. In this area, we have a lot of toll funding available in this particular impact area that allows us to free up some more on sidewalks, so if you have any questions, feel.
Excellent. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Cerchi at all on this? You know, Randy, just real quickly, I know probably during the construction period, there will be some temporary inconveniences for folks who live in the area and use that sidewalk. Can you talk just about how you guys plan to make that as smooth as possible?
Hancock's a unique road. We've done a lot of work out there. It's predominantly eastbound in the mornings, westbound in the afternoons, so even though the contractor wants to fire up first thing in the morning, they can, westbound, and then reverse it in the afternoon, so we kind of miss two-way traffic. Any big cuts or anything that involves both things, we do at night.
Excellent. Should be a great project, especially for folks who live in that Moody River community trying to walk down to 41. Good deal. All right, let's go ahead and move to public comment then on item number six. Does anybody wish to speak in public comment on item six? All right, I see none. Commissioners, does anybody wish to make a motion?
No.
Motion for approval from Commissioner Manning?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Pendergrass. Do we have any discussion on that? All right, seeing no discussion, are there any objections? No objections, that motion carries unanimously. And item seven, we actually got a brief introduction from Mr. Cerchi. I think they're going to put the map up here real quick for us. Do you want to just talk again about item number seven, Mr. Cerchi?
Seven's in the city of Cape Coral's utility area. They have a large, when they, when they crossed that canal between Hunter Boulevard, 24th Street, and Del Prado, just south of where the, right there in the middle there, you see that canal crossing? They went, instead of going sub aqua, it's under the canal, they chose to go over the canal, so we're going to relocate that line on their behalf of their, the city. We worked with the city, they're contributing about $840,000 to this project to relocate their water line over on top of the bridge that will extend a little bit, so just, again, same rules for MOT and inconvenience traffic apply on this section as well.
Excellent. What questions do we have? Any, Commissioners? Okay, very good. At this time, I'll call for public comment on item number seven, the Hancock Bridge Parkway Sidewalk Project. Anybody wish to speak on that? Seeing none, we'll close public comment.
Yeah, item.
You have a motion for approval from Commissioner Manning? Second from Commissioner Sandelli? Very good. All right, any further discussion on this item? I think it's a great project, and you see all the homes around there and the parks that are nearby. It provides a great connection for folks who are trying to get there. All right, I'll go ahead and call the question. Are there any objections? Seeing no objections, then that motion carries unanimously. And item number eight, briefly for Pine Island here.
Yeah, this is a shared use path, should be an eight-foot-wide asphalt shared use path on, from 8th Avenue to York Road along, along Stringfellow on north side, or east side, it's a pretty good project as well. It's worked its way, I think it was in number four selection in the 2014 BPAC selection crew, that worked its way into the program then, and again, we've worked with rights of way and design until we're ready to pull the trigger, and again, we have another bridge to work across there, north end.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Cerchi at all?
Just locate that for me. If I'm going out to Pine Island and I hit the island, am I left or right, north or south?
Go left, go south, almost to the very end.
St. James, all the way down there?
Yep, St. James City there.
And it's how long about?
Oh, it's fairly long. I don't have the footage right here in front of me. It's probably a mile, maybe three-quarters of miles.
Okay, thank you.
Very good.
I don't get there every day, and I'm curious, yeah.
This one's, this one is a real, all of, three of them actually are a real example of how persistence pays off. These came through in 2013 and 2014 on the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and now they're, they're finally coming to fruition. It's a pretty cool deal.
They're being right along.
Yeah. Does anybody wish to speak in public comment on the Stringfellow sidewalk or multi-use path? Okay, seeing none, we'll, we'll close public comment.
Get him.
We have a motion from the District Commissioner Manning. Do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Sandelli. Do we have any further discussion on this item? Okay, seeing no further discussion, are there any objections? No objections, then that motion carries unanimously. All right, that concludes the eight items that were on our administrative agenda. At this time, we'll move to our 9:30 a.m. public hearings in the county attorney's office. Please introduce the first item.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Joe Adams with the county attorney's office. I have your first three public hearings. At this point, I'm going to provide the affidavit publication to your clerk. Okay, the first hearing is a petition to vacate the public interest in the public utility easement located at 502 Hibiscus Avenue, Lehigh Acres, Florida. If there's any questions, we'd have to answer them.
Any questions, Commissioners?
I'll move it if there is.
Okay. Motion for approval from Commissioner Mann, and the second is from Commissioner Manning. At this time, I'll call for public comment on the 502 Hibiscus Avenue vacation. Do we, do we have anybody who wishes to speak on that? We'll close public comment then. Any further discussion? Seeing none, are there any objections? No objections, that motion carries unanimously. Number two, please.
Second public hearing is a petition to vacate the public interest in the public utility and drainage easement located at 827 Naples Avenue South, Lehigh Acres, Florida.
Excellent. Do we have a motion for approval from Commissioner Mann?
Second.
And then the second is from Commissioner Manning. Do we have anybody who wishes to speak in public comment on 827 Naples Avenue South? We'll close public comment. Any further discussion? Are there any objections? No objections, that motion carries unanimously. Item three?
Third public hearing is a petition to vacate the public interest in the public utility easement located at 3702 Sixth Street West, Lehigh Acres, Florida.
Very good. Motion for approval from Commissioner Mann, and the second is from Commissioner Manning. Do we have any, anybody here who wishes to speak in public comment on 3702 Sixth Street West? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment. Any further discussion? Any objections? No objections, that motion carries unanimously. And public hearing number four, Mr. County Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Public hearing number four is a continuation of the public hearing that was commenced during your October 3, 2020 board meeting. Commissioners, this is with regard to the creation of the Galt Island Avenue Ownership and Maintenance MSBU. Commissioners, this matter was continued from your public hearing in order to afford yourselves the opportunity to obtain greater information. It's my understanding that that information has now been provided, and following the conduct of your public hearing, we would respectfully request approval.
Very good. Do we have any questions for our staff or county attorney's office at this time? Commissioner Pendergrass?
For the county attorney. So this item was brought forward by the residents. They lobbied for this, about this war, they took a vote, and that story, we have to approve what they voted for, correct?
Commissioners, you have the ultimate authority and discretion under state statute. However, in cooperation with your own administrative code, it is appropriate for you to follow that public vote that took place. The majority of the residents moved approval of this request, and this request did originate from the residents.
Thank you.
Any further questions for our staff? Okay, then at this time, let's go ahead and begin the public comment portion of this. I have several speakers. When you come to the podium, you don't need to touch anything, it's all set for you. Just come forward, and there's a green light, a yellow light, and a red light right at the top there. When the red light comes on, I'm going to go ahead and call the next speaker, just to be fair and make sure that everybody has the same amount of time, okay? Very good. So Anita Meeks is first. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Anita Meeks, and I am a resident of Galt Island. I am opposed to the O and M MSBU proposal as presented. Let me refer to the Galt Island subdivision, ours, as Galt Island, and Galt Island Avenue Property Management Group as PRG. PRG physically owns the tract of land along the Galt Island Avenue, and their declaration of restrictions specifically fixes PRG responsibility for road maintenance to include right-of-way and landscaping. Over the years, PRG has planted palm trees and other vegetation within those right-of-ways, causing damages to the edge of the road. From 1999 to 2013, our HOA annually contributed $135 per lot to a combined designated road reserve fund for road surfaces only. I was president of the association when we asked for the status of the road reserve fund in 2012. What we discovered from that is that we were paying $135 as HOA dues and not as dedicated road services. In fact, there was no reserved road fund, and all funds were commingled in their HOA accounts to conduct their HOA business. Our HOA voted unanimously to escrow the annual road reserved with intent to pay our fair share when actual road services works, occurred, as we did in 2004 and again in 2009. As PRG, as, at PRG's request, they then told us to seek legal counsel in this matter, and it was documented that we had no obligation to them whatsoever, but as a moral obligation to help pay for the road. Multiple unsuccessful attempts were made by us to establish a new agreement because PRG wanted to control the money and refused to restore the 15-foot right-of-way on the north side, insisted on including the cost of landscaping, and did not recognize the $12,591 plus change that we had as a balance in their accounts. I cannot understand nor do I agree that the PRG homeowners association can assess, can assign the maintenance and landscaping responsibilities to us as owners when no landowner agreed to incur such a responsibility. Basically, I feel this is a hostile takeover from our association to theirs, and we are being forced into their MSBU. How would you vote if this were you? Thank you.
Mrs. Meeks, thank you for your comments. Kathy Spear, and after Kathy Spear will be Rachel Belens.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, my name is Kathy Spear, and I'm a resident of Galt Island. I'm opposed also to the O and M MSBU proposal as presented, and I'll use Galt Island and PRG when referring to the two HOAs. For the initial exploration of an MSBU, a county representative indicated that there were 30 signatures. 24 were from PRG, six Galt Island signatures were for capital improvement only. There, then, because of that, there was not a majority of 52 lots to proceed for an O and M MSBU. Subsequently, a county representative conducted all coordination, multiple meetings, and briefings with PRG only. No Galt Island members were included to participate in any MSBU discussions. A county representative attended the HOA meeting for PRG, but Galt Island wasn't offered the same courtesy. After receiving county legal advice, Tim Gard notified PRG to stop the MSBU petition, and so we understood that the issue was dead. However, 27 PRG homeowners signed the petition, there were no Galt Island signatures. PRG's proposed budget deposits to the county for the, this O and M MSBU are not equally applied to all 52 lots either. The resulting allocation for PRG is $1,011 per lot. For Galt Island, it's $1,739 per lot after consideration of Galt Island's residual $12,591 already in PRG's accounts. There's no desire by Galt Island to contribute to the normal O and M landscaping costs, which are clearly the documented responsibility of the PRG's 37 owners, especially the clearing of their planted encroachments within the right-of-way. Requests at the O and M MSBU proposal be limited to the 37 lots comprising PRG, since they own the ground, planted the vegetation in the right-of-way, and have longstanding recorded declarations that define the O and M responsibilities. At such time when a capital improvement project for the resurfacing of Galt Island Avenue occurs, Galt Island would plan to join that effort since we annually budget an escrow for that eventuality. So my question is, with no Galt Island owners concurring with the O and M MSBU, and with PRG's disregard of maintaining the right-of-way, how can the county assign PRG's maintenance responsibilities to Galt Island owners? Thank you. We also have six emails that came out last night, sorry they were late, from other residents on the island that opposing the MSBU. Some of them are sent to all of you, and some were sent just to one or two, but we have copies.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
For your comments. Rachel Belens, and then that will be followed by Gary Spear. Morning.
Hi, good morning. My name's Rachel Belens, and I hold a vested interest in the property on Galt Island Avenue as a resident and as my parents being homeowners on the island. We oppose thoroughly the O and M MSBU proposal. Through the years, we've been cooperative with the Galt Island Avenue Property Rights Group, the PRG, but a private meeting took place without our notice or consent agreeing to and looping us into the raising of fees in question. Mrs. Spears and Meeks have already iterated thoroughly, as well as the other six residents that have emailed in, are opposition to this. Please consider our stance, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Spear?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, first of all, I assume you remember everything I said last time, so I won't belabor any of those comments. First of all, bottom line up front, I respect and recognize your position of authority and your responsibility. Having been in positions of authority significantly over my time in uniform, I understand where you sit and the authority and decisions you have to make. I also appreciate that you seek legal counsel, but what I found is legal counsel often gives a position on the specific question asked, and the county attorney will very much tell you that this process technically meets all the legal requirements to establish an MSBU. But the question I raise is, is it the right procedure? You've already heard about the lack of transparency. You've already heard about the MSBU coordinator and legal counsel tending to that this was canceled, but we never received any notification that, oh, we're just kidding, or the truth changed. I do appreciate that truth changes sometimes. So it's the lack of transparency through the process. I also understand that the county attorney is giving you a position on this specific question of the MSBU as presented. He could equally have given a position if the question had been asked to confine it to the 37 lots on Galt Island Avenue, or even to do a hybrid MSBU where the 37 lots are responsible for O and M and all 52 lots are responsible at the time of a capital project are divided into two MSBU's, if that were the question asked. However, it kind of begs, if you look at that map, a different question that really ought to be considered as opposed to the MSBU at all. You'll notice that the entirety of the north side of Galt Island Avenue are public lands owned by the state of Florida and Lee County. The only pedestrian access to that lake you saw in that other graphic is from Galt Island Avenue. People have to park on Galt Island Avenue to walk in. The address of the state land is 4200 Galt Island Avenue. So the real question ought to be, why is this not a county road? Again, I recommend that you do not approve the MSBU as presented. If you approve it, confine it to the 37, but I really think you need to look at the county road option. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Mr. Spear, thank you for your comments. Does anybody else wish to speak in public comment on, on this item today? All right, seeing none, I'll close public comment and I'll move back to the board. Does anybody wish to make a motion or ask a question at this time?
I have a question for the county attorney.
Mr. Pendergrass?
County attorney, in this item before, say, item B, says create the Galt Island O and M MSBU advisory committee. So this be a committee of residents that's involved with this? That will be, basically, this is like, this is, this is the nightmare HOA sound like to me, drama going on here, but as far as, they're going to be, residents will be part of that committee, correct? They will oversee this?
That is part of your standard practice for MSBU's. As they traverse from year to year, we work cooperatively with a citizens committee to establish the budget and the work program for the upcoming years.
And it was all advertised properly with a notice for all the residents involved during the voting of this?
Yes, sir.
And we also heard, we also got emails and letters from people that supported this item before.
Yes, sir. Both the statutory, I apologize, both the statutory test as well as the requirements for your administrative code.
Okay, thank you. I didn't, I want to yield to the district commissioner. I don't know if he had received more communication than what we had done, because I know it was mentioned that one of us received more than all of us, so.
I'll move the item, Mr. Chairman.
So the motion is for approval from Commissioner Manning? Do we have a second?
A second.
Second from Commissioner Pendergrass. Okay, do we have any further discussion on this item then? Commissioner Sandelli?
My concern for this is that this has been a long-term stalemate, and that bothered me the last time we heard this, because I don't like neighbors, disagreeing with neighbors, me the last time we heard this because I don't like neighbors, disagreeing with neighbors, but it happens all the time. And I think that the formation, you know, here using this vehicle is what it's intended for. It's a pathway, you know, to resolve these issues that haven't gone off for some time. And so I've got some concerns, but I think it's probably the best way to go.
Very good. If there's no further questions or comments, I had a couple I wanted to ask the county attorney's office. Mr. Wesh, could you address the point that was raised about what happened with Mr. Gard and somebody with the county attorney's office at some point advising to stop the collection of petitions?
Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, the issue that came up in the email, and this is when I got involved with the case, involved a statement from an attorney in our office saying that because of the association's requirement to maintain it, that the MSBU was unnecessary. And we quickly addressed that. We do not get into what is or is not necessary. The petition and the residents' request to follow our administrative code met the requirements of the administrative code, met the requirements of state statute, and that was the limitations of our role in this. We should not get into whether or not it is or is not necessary. And that's why there was a change from the email that went out saying, hold on, this isn't necessary based on the underlying deed restrictions slash covenants to maintain that road. And that's where that issue came up.
So at that point, what happened then? It became live again? They began collecting petitions again, or?
Yeah, I'll have to ask MSBU staff to tell you exactly what else happened after that. We have the petitions that went out and came back with 27 votes in favor of it, but I don't have the exact facts as to what did or did not happen after that email.
Okay, okay. And then one other question, you know, obviously, we heard a little in public comment about, it sounds like there's an HOA dispute here. These are, these are hard matters because an HOA seems kind of like a quasi-governmental entity, but we have no oversight over any HOAs. What those are basically private legal disputes. Is that the correct understanding?
That's correct. Whether or not the Galt Island or PRG have rights or obligations between themselves is not, not within our purview, and we're not going to identify who's right or who's wrong.
It's, really, that's more for a judge to decide, not the county commission then?
Correct.
Okay, okay. All right, I think that answers the questions that I had. Commissioners, any further questions? Commissioner Sandelli?
I think one of the issues that was brought up was the collection of funds and the use of funds. And if I'm correct, the MSBU will help administer that so that it takes that issue out of camp. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
There you go. Commissioner Pendergrass.
I have a question. After time, how can the residents petition to remove the process, the MSBU? Can they remove it like after a year?
That question I don't have the answer for.
Okay, thank you.
So, well, I think that's a good question, Commissioner Pendergrass. Right, if they, I mean, let's just ask it so that we have it on the record. Could you revote? Could you redo the petition at some point in the future and remove it, Mr. Wesh?
Mr. Chairman, statutorily, the residents would have an opportunity to disband the MSBU. That would be through a similar notification process and vote. There would have to be adequate provision made for any debts incurred by the unit up to that point, but the residents are in control of their own destiny and do have the ability to disband an MSBU.
And we've received?
I apologize. Let me just clarify. They can ask the Board of County Commissioners to disband the MSBU. Statutorily, that authority to disband just as to create rests with the elected body, you all.
Thank you.
Have we received any notice from any of the people who turned in the petitions that they wanted to withdraw their votes or withdraw their petitions?
Not to our knowledge, no, sir.
All right, so that sounds like it stands. All right, Commissioners, we have a motion on the floor for approval from Commissioner Manning, and the second was from Commissioner Pendergrass. Any questions or comments then? All right, at this time, we'll go ahead and call the question then. Are there any objections? All right, I see no objections then. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you, folks. It's a hard, that's a hard one to go through. All right. Thank you, Mr. DeJolais. All right, let's move on. At this point, we have concluded our public hearing agenda. We have no walk-ons. We have no carryovers today. Let's move to Commissioner items. Commissioners, Man, Commissioner Mann, do you have anything? No? Commissioner Manning, do you have anything? Commissioner Pendergrass?
No.
Commissioner Sandelli? I have one Commissioner item that I was, my ask is going to be to direct the staff to take a look at this and bring it back on a future agenda if they, with their staff recommendation. There's a problem that I've gotten a chance to go out and see firsthand on Lake Okeechobee. There's all this vegetation that grows in the lake, and what happens is they, there is a state agency that goes out and sprays this subaquatic vegetation, and it dies and then falls to the bottom of the lake. Well, as it decays, it then loads the lake full of nutrients from decaying plant matter. There's been a lot of talk about ending the spraying on Lake Okeechobee, which I think is a good idea. Fewer nutrients in the lake means the water quality is going to be better in the lake. A group visited me with an idea to mechanically remove those plants and basically, for lack of a better word, juice them and then apply that solution to the farm fields nearby as fertilizer. The idea sounded like it might have some merit, but my thought was, get your direction to have our staff review it. What they're ask is to pass a resolution that's similar to a resolution that Collier County just passed. Collier County passed a resolution that didn't support any specific project, but merely supported the idea of an innovative pilot project to extract nutrient-rich sediments and mechanical harvesting of these invasive plants from Lake Okeechobee. So they didn't identify a specific project, and I don't think we should either, but this idea of passing a resolution saying that we would encourage the state to look into mechanical harvesting as opposed to spraying, let's have our staff look at that and bring that back on a future blue sheet and see if that's something we want to endorse. Do you guys agree with that idea?
I'll move that.
Okay, so motion from Commissioner Pendergrass. Do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Sandelli. Any further discussion then on that? Yeah, Commissioner Mann?
Mr. Chairman, only to say that I'm familiar with this process of the spraying. It's been going on for, I mean, a long time. I mean, 40 years probably. The mechanical harvesting is an alternative, but it's slow and it's expensive. They've tried both, for instance, at Lake Trafford over there near Immaculate. The Lee County mosquito control also is a hyacinth and weed, aquatic weed control service as well, and they have been doing both, the spraying and to a minor extent, the harvesting. This, as I say, it's been looked at by federal, state, and county agencies for a long time. I just want us, I want staff to just look at the history here and look at the alternatives. I'm not ready to just jump on this because it's not a brand-new issue.
Right.
We're all in favor of clean water, but let's just.
I agree. I think we're in favor of the concept, the mechanism. Did we call the question, what's the best way?
Yeah, I agree. Okay, well, very good. Let me just ask, since I brought it up, does anybody object to us making this request to our staff in public comment? Okay, I'll close public comment then. Any further discussion on the item, Commissioners? Okay, seeing none then, I'll call the question. Any objections? No objections? All right, thank you. So you all will take a look at that and bring it back to us in the future with the staff recommendation of what?
We understand.
Thank you. All right, that concludes my Commissioner items then. Commissioner Mann, do you have any appointments today?
I have one, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Fred Richards to the Community Action Agency.
We have a motion from Commissioner Mann and the seconds from Commissioner Manning. Are there any discussion? Any objections? No objections? That motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Manning? None? Okay, I have none as well. Commissioner Pendergrass?
I have one reappointment, Michael Morris to the Land Development Code.
Second.
Motion from Commissioner Pendergrass, second from Commissioner Manning. Any discussion? Any objection? No objection? Motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Sandelli? Okay, no appointments. Very good. At this time, we'll move to county manager items. Mr. County Manager, give us your county manager update and also give us the workshop update at this time.
Yes, sir.
And then we'll go right into public comment after that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner, I have three items for you this morning, very quickly. Asking your permission to, your schedule for your regular county commission meeting on November 3rd, which of course is the day for the general election, we're asking to move that meeting from the November 3rd to November 10th.
Okay, does anybody object to that request from the county manager?
No move.
Just because it's on election day?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. I know that Commissioner Hammond has campaigning board duties that day, and I know you all will be pretty busy.
We're praying for it to be short that day.
And would the reorganization be then the following week, the 17th?
That is correct.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. Do you need a motion for that? Well, we have a motion from Commissioner Manning. Do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Mann. Any discussion on that item? All right, anybody wish to speak in public comment on that? Okay, we'll close. Mr. Ballard, come to the, yeah, I know, come to the podium real quick. We just got to make sure we get it all on the mic, that's all.
I brought this item up about two months ago, and everybody thought then it didn't need to be, because I even pointed out that you was on the campaigning board. Commissioner Sandelli is up for election. Commissioner Mann, if they're doing their job, they're going to be opposed, so you wouldn't have enough to even have a board meeting that day. And I said, and they flat told me, oh, there's not a problem. So there's more of a problem than we thought.
Thanks, Mr.
Well, let the record show that Mr. Ballard recommended this months ago.
In fact, if it's okay, we'll call it the Mr. Ballard amendment, or?
Yeah, sure. Resolution.
Resolution, there you go. All right, any further discussion, Commissioners? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Any objection? No objection? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, and Mr. County Manager, the rest of your update?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Would ask for your approval for a letter designating Pam Keyes, Utilities Director, as primary FGUA board member, and Christine Brady, Assistant County Manager, as the alternate.
Okay, do we have?
Reluctantly, I'll move it, Mr. Chairman.
Motion from Commissioner Manning?
I'll second it with great joy.
And a second from Commissioner Mann. Any discussion on that? Any objections to that? No objections? That carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One last item here, asking that you please appoint Mr. Jim Mitchell from Sunova's Bank to the Financial Auditor Selection Committee as a Board of County Commission Representative. The law has recently changed requiring a member of the private sector to be part of the selection committee.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Manning. Do we have a second from Commissioner Pendergrass? Any discussion on that? Commissioner Mann?
Question.
Yeah?
Length of term for this appointment? And this is one, we're approving a staff recommendation, but this is not a recommendation of any individual commissioner, and that's the way this is usually handled for this particular office.
Yes, so this is a new designation, so Pete, can you help us out?
Yeah, Commissioners, this is new per state statute. It was changed last year. There's a requirement that there be a private citizen on the auditor selection committee for the county's financial audit. This individual, Jim Mitchell, was recommended by the clerk's office, which is kind of the primary entity that helps the financial auditor.
Pete, what would be the term? Will this be from one year, year to year?
It would just be, it would just be for this selection. The auditor contract usually runs about three years with optional renewals.
Okay, we just, we've gone through the awkwardness of the length of terms for, whether they're two or appointed for life like the Supreme Court, so this?
This is only?
For the term of the audit?
No, just to select, it's just the selection committee for selecting the auditor, and then it's over until?
Oh, they do their thing and evaporate?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, it's a selection committee just like?
That's a good way of doing things, yeah. Okay, thank you, that answered it.
All right, well, then I'll go ahead and call the question. Are there any objections? No objections then? The motion carries unanimously.
And, Mr. Chair, would you like for me to introduce the pub, the workshop this afternoon, or the county attorney has an item also?
Let's go ahead and introduce the workshop. Well, you know what, let's, we'll come right back to you for the workshop update then. Go ahead, Mr. County Attorney.
Mr. Chairman, we have for your consideration the 31st extension of the state of local emergency for the county's response to the COVID-19 crisis.
We have a motion for approval from Commissioner Manning and the seconds from Commissioner Mann. Do we have any discussion on that? Do we have any objections to that? Well, let me ask, anybody want to speak in public comment on the state of local emergency related to COVID? Okay, well, Mr. Truax? All right, we've got you later too for another thing.
Good morning, Tom. My name's Todd Truax, living in Bonita Springs. You're talking about the COVID, right?
Yes, we're extending the state of local emergency related to COVID.
I'm glad about that, because as I came in the door in front of this building, there was a sign that said, "We respectfully ask that you wear a face mask and observe social distance." And I applaud that, that posting. And I encourage not only that you continue that emergency clarification, but you perhaps pass an ordinance for masks in the county. And not just respectfully request, but lead by example by wearing a mask and observe social distancing.
All right, any further public comment on that? Okay, we'll close public comment. Commissioners, any further discussion on this item? No? All right, any objections? No objections? That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, sir.
All right, and does that conclude county attorney items for today?
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, thank you. And Mr. DeJolais, workshop update?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you recall, last month, you instructed, you instructed us to put together a workshop on homelessness to, in a workshop to take place this month that is scheduled for this afternoon at 1:30, where we will present actually a lot of information on the homeless programs that currently exist and then for you all to discuss. The sheriff will also be joining us along with his staff for that workshop.
Very good. You guys have put together a great presentation. That presentation's online if anybody wishes to see it before this afternoon's workshop. Just go to leegov.com. You can view the PowerPoint presentation, talks about all the things that we're doing related to homeless, and we'll, we'll have a good discussion as a group of county commissioners at 1:30 over in the other building, right? Where we hold our?
I guess it'll be at Admin East.
Good deal. But this is the time now to go ahead and give us public comment, things that you want us to consider for that workshop, so that we can think about them between now and the workshop, and then, you know, take your input to that workshop and make some decisions based on that. So let's go ahead and begin. We'll also combine this, this is the workshop public comment and the public presentation of matters by citizens, and I'll go ahead and call each speaker up. Remember, when you come to the podium, you don't have to touch anything. It's completely set for you. There's the green light, the yellow light, and the red light at the top. When your time starts to get close to the end, remember, I'm going to go ahead and call somebody when that red light comes on, just to make sure we're fair to all the speakers. The first speaker is William Joe Schottmiller, followed by Kat, Kat Dee. So Mr. Schottmiller, if you're here? Good morning, sir.
Unfortunately, our fellow advocate Kat couldn't be here due to health issues, and Brian, you do owe her apology from last time. I will read what she does have to say. Great, okay, here, here. Proverbs 28:27, this is from her, okay? Whoever gives to the poor will lack nothing, but the one who closes his eyes to them will receive many curses. Please read this to Brian, which I did. Say, Honorable Commissioner Brian, would she pray for you when you were sick? Okay, she's a very kind person, and she does have health issues for you, but you do owe her apology for that comment. Hope you will start helping the poor and judge them no anymore. So that is from Jasmine. This meeting this afternoon, I hope we do, it does get some emergency place like today or whenever, because there's all kinds of places out there, as I've said before. Last meeting, Mark used, told me to get ahold of Roger. We got ahold of Roger for the family that is living in the car. They're still living in their car, so we need to touch base maybe at this workshop so they do have options and we can forward it to them, okay? People with children do not need to be living in a vehicle, and like I said, we have all kinds of resources. We got people that will do sweat equity. I went to the meeting last night, Habitat for Humanity, FEMA. So let's, let's all work together in this community, the city, county, and stop saying city, county, and work together so we all on the same page. With that, I will turn it over to my fellow advocate, or fellowess.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Let's call up Kat Dee, and if you would pronounce your last name when you get up here, I apologize. And then after that, Mr. Truax, did you wish to speak again? Okay, very good.
Good morning. Commissioner, thank you very much for taking the time to hear me today. I want to ask each and every one of you if you know how many people you have in your district who are currently without shelter and in need of services. Have you seen an increase? Do you even know? I can assure you that regardless of where your district lies, that you have a growing crisis on your hands that isn't being addressed. How about the number of homeless women who are victims of rape in your district? Does local law enforcement have a record of these rape victims? How are you protecting these homeless women? The current system that tens of millions of dollars is being spent on is not working. There is no return on investment, and things are only getting worse amid a pandemic. Does it not bother you that thousands of residents are being left to sleep on the streets? So much focus is being put on those you say don't want help. But I can assure you that is not the case. I have not met a single person who doesn't want help or shelter. I've met dozens personally since I moved here a couple months ago. I'm tired of public officials like you and law enforcement continuing to distract from the truth by casting judgment on those in crisis. A significant shift needs to occur in our efforts to address homelessness. Now, today, I am calling upon all of you to represent all of you in your district, all of those constituents, not just the ones that can donate to your campaigns. You can no longer say that you didn't know or you didn't hear us. Get used to us. We are here to participate in the long run until there is change. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's call up Mr. Todd Truax, followed by Bruce Vanderveen.
Those are some powerful words. Thank you, Kat. I took a little picture, you know, as I'm out waving my sign and campaigning, but I saw something that was pretty, pretty moving to me. And it was a cardboard sign on the corner of Daniels and 41. And it was scrawled on a piece of cardboard, pulled off a box. And I'll show you guys later. I can't pull it up on the screen, but it says homeless in capital letters, trying to buy with an extra Y, ticket home out of state. Anything helps with an, three S's. God bless. The homeless situation is, is something that we can't ignore. They can't, we can't just keep pushing aside or pushing to the river or pushing to the woods. They're on the street corners. As you're stopping waiting for your red light, they're there up and down panhandling. They're there on the street corners taking a nap, because there's no other place for a siesta. I'm on the board for the Cafe of Life, and I've already offered the services from the, from the cafe to transport these folks if we find a place to transport them to. We have three vans and a bus. We transport migrant workers to our, our place to feed them three, five days a week, 50 to 150 people a day. I'm a social worker, so I put in the network. I've tapped into the Salvation Army. They are ready. They can help. We need to coordinate these services and do something about the situation, rather than, you know, fencing them off and pushing them further into the dark corners. I hope you can do that.
Thank you. Let's call Bruce Vanderveen, followed by Michelle Ayers.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you. The homeless situation, we've got a building here in North Fort Myers called Hancock Square. It's empty, been empty for a number of years. Why can't we make a deal with the Salvation Army to take over that building? Build something for those people, so they've got a place to go. We also have a building on Pine Island Road that was hit, and the building is half over, and nothing's been done, and homeless are sleeping in that building. And that building comes down, who's going to be responsible for that? I mean, that building's been that way for probably, what, six months, eight months? So I mean, I'm, I'm with her. We got to do something to get these people off the street. They need help. They need jobs. And I'm sure there's people out here that are homeless, that are in the construction business, that are in the, whatever type of business they were in, that we can help them get back on the path. But I think the Salvation Army would be a good start. And, you know, get these buildings converted over. I mean, he's, the place is a dump over there in Hancock Square, so it's an eyesore. You know, we got to get it. You guys got to get it cleaned up. We got to get it cleaned up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Michelle Ayers, followed by Kristi Lee Iwano.
Good morning. How are you doing today? My name is Michelle Ayers. I'm, I'm born and raised in North Fort Myers. And as everybody else, I have seen the huge pickup in the homeless situation. And I myself am extremely intimidated, sitting at the stoplights and going into stores, and seeing the people sleeping in front of the stores and stepping over them going into the stores. I'm aware of a lot of the homeless don't want help because of housing rules, but there are a lot of them that do want help. And the demographics have seemed to change, and there are a lot of misplaced families. You don't see the families because they are in hiding, because they do not want to ask for help, because they don't want to fail, they don't want the fear of losing their kids. Kids don't even tell their friends. My sister and I watched quite a few documentaries in the last month. And we have been doing a lot of researching of states and other counties and see what they're doing to see what works. One documentary stood out that really totally broke my heart. It was for Broward County, the Broward County School System. They have 170 homeless children. And some of these children are teenagers that are out on their own with no place to go. And they're lost, and they have no one to talk to. So one little girl was sleeping in a laundromat. And she would sleep behind the dryers, and nobody would see her, because she'd try to stay out of the way. And she would say sometimes she'd get to sleep on side of someone's house. She'd see somebody, and they recognize family, and she'd be safe. She'd sleep on the side of their house. And that really, really touched me hard, because in the past year, I've seen a lot of my friends that have been faced with homeless situations firsthand, either, either taking people in or homeless themselves. I have a friend who is a very good friend, and she's had, moving with her cousin and their full family, because she's got nowhere to go, and she's got three kids up her own, and she's a single mom, and it's all because of COVID. I have another friend who actually took a friend and let him stay in his backyard for a while until he had to have him move on, because he had nowhere to go, but I guess they want him to go live in the woods. Basically, I'm just saying that we've got to do something about this. This, this just can't keep going on. And pushing the homeless along is not going to be the answer. There's a lot of programs out there that help, and a lot of these people just need to know where to find these programs. Thank you.
Kristi Lee Iwano, followed by Bob Hill.
Hello. Good morning. My name is Kristi Iwano, and I'm a director of the North Fort Myers Civic Association. We have an increase of homeless and panhandling in North Fort Myers. I have noticed the off-ramp of I-75. There's a, a couple who have been there for over a week, as well as the increase of panel handling in the front and side of North Fort Myers Walmart. Our community have made the continuous comment that this would not be tolerated in Naples nor in Cape Coral. Maybe that's why we've seen such an increase in North Fort Myers. Back in the day, when you used to see a panhandler, you felt good about giving back and helping someone in need. Now, it's hard to differentiate the difference who needs genuine help or those who are making a career out of panhandling. I am here to attend the workshop and work towards more opportunities for the homeless and the betterment of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Hill, followed by Doug Daly.
Hi. I'm Bob Hill, resident in North Fort Myers. And I welcome the workshop. Definitely need it. We're in a crisis. The empty buildings are a problem. The Pine Island building that you mentioned, I live in front of that building. I'm responsible with the owner. He's in Miami. He's supposedly having that building tore down at the end of this month. But anyway, the empty buildings and the owners and the responsibilities. I've been to that building in numerous in my area, probably 20 times, 911, ambulance, homeless people, needles in their arms, you know. These were homeless people. I'm not saying everybody, but these are the ones I deal with. You know, they have drug issues. That's, you know, and these empty buildings and these owners are like, so they should be held responsible, Hancock Square Buildings, all that. So I hope you all address that. I'm sure you will, the workshop. And I welcome it. And so does our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. All right. Doug Daly, followed by George Sand.
Thank you, Commissioner Hammond, Chairman Hammond, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Doug Daly. I am the president of the North Fort Myers Civic Association. And as you can see, we have several of our members here today regarding this issue. For many years, even before COVID became a situation in all of our lives, North Fort Myers has always been deemed a ground zero for the homeless situation of Lee County for many, many years. We have been held hostage by one person on an abandoned plaza that has created quite a controversy in our area, and not a very pleasant one. We also have a meth clinic that is located within North Fort Myers. And as if you can see from Sheriff's Department's reports and everything, that is a hot zone for the homeless in our area. While everybody here has, and we all respect everybody's situation, we respect those in our community that are homeless, and we want to help. However, as Kristi mentioned, not all are homeless by choice. They make a profession, and they take away the good. You have your good apples, and you have your bad apples. We also have a concern of health and safety in our issue, in our community. The panhandlers have now started a turf war up along Hancock and 41, Pine Island Road, and Weaver's Corner, to mention a few of our, every night, you can go up there, you will see panhandlers. And there are turf wars concerning these people, that they are actually fighting for their positions, for their own benefit. It is a community problem. It is a choice. Homeless have their choice. But however, we have a choice of a community to live in a safe and secure community. And that is our choice as residents of our community. I want to thank Commissioner Hammond for the invitation for our group this afternoon to the workshop. We look forward to going into more detail with this, and we look forward to working with not only the commission, but our homeless community as well, and the residents of North Fort Myers. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. George Sand, followed by Danny Ballard.
Thank you all for this opportunity. I've been involved in trying to help Palmona Park in North Fort Myers for over 20 years now. The problem has so many fingers off it. It's not, gee, that's the problem. Let's fix it, because it scatters all over. There's too many kids involved. One of the largest groups is the Hispanic speaking population up there in North Fort Myers. The men go out to work and forget to come home, and they're sitting there hungry and starving, and they have no cars and no income to drive to these around food banks. Many a time, I thought it would be nice to have the 1930s back where the pushcart went down the street. I don't have the answers, okay? I'm not here to give answers. I just have a lot of seeing. The drugs are tremendous. As you might have known, Palmona Park affords the Sheriff's Department to patrol, extra patrols in Palmona Park. They try, but there's, they can't get them home. And I don't know. I just don't have the answers. I hope that collectively, we can come up with some, but I don't think we're going to come up with some in two or three hours. So it's a long-term project. God bless you all.
All right. Danny Ballard, and that's the last card that I have for today.
Commissioners, Danny Ballard, Vice President of the North Fort Myers Civic Association. It's not my first time speaking about this item. We've talked about this numerous times. I've had meetings with Mark Moore. I looked at the maps yesterday. I've even been with Captain Joe Moore from the Sheriff's Department. We've rode, looked at the homeless camps. I know they're on the map that is in the agenda packet this afternoon. And also in looking at that map, I see how many, how much purple area or magenta area is on the north side of the river. Homeless is not just in North Fort Myers. It's, it's a county-wide problem, anywhere. Frank, you've got a lot of it out in the Lee area, and I know that from driving the roads of Lee County. It's even down in the south end. It's just not as bad in the south end as it is in the north end. The other issue is, you've got Salvation Army over here. There is no buildings, to my knowledge, and I think Mark could attest to that, on the north side of the river, right now for the homeless to go to, other than vacant buildings. Hancock Square is one. Standing up under the overpass at I-75 is another issue. The dilapidated building the car ran through that was, that's going to be torn down. We take them out of that building. They're going to go somewhere else. So I hope out of this afternoon's workshop, we can come up with a plan of finding a facility that's on the north side of the river, and I think that will be a big help. You know, I know, everybody sitting in this room knows that there are people out there that's taking advantage of this, and they're panhandling, and they're making a living out of panhandling. They're not really homeless. They have a place to live. They found an easy way to go out and get money, looking for the sympathy of the public. There are some other areas that, and I know whether you'll like, come on, I got 52 seconds. There are some other areas in the state that not only are they putting up no trespassing signs to keep the homeless or the panhandlers from out of the intersections, but they're also fining the people that stop and give them money. Because part of the comment was made, if we can stop them from giving them money, maybe we can get the panhandlers out of the intersection. So there's some ordinances I know the county could look at. The Sheriff's Department's doing about all they can. You can only arrest them so many times. They're out of spaces in the jail. You can only run them out of the intersection so many times. It's a major issue. And I know Sheriff Carmine will be here this afternoon to address it. But I'm like what George said, I'm not sure we can resolve it this afternoon.
Thanks, Mr. Ballard. All right. That is all of the comment cards that I have. Did anybody who has not had a turn to speak already wish to speak before we close the meeting today? Okay, good deal. We'll close public comment. And Commissioners, that concludes all the business that we have on today's agenda. So if there are no objections, then we'll adjourn. Meeting adjourned.